Good evening, everyone. You're allowed to call this October 5th of 2021 Harris County Board of Commissioners making the order. Commissioner Andrews will lead us around the case.
Good afternoon, Father. We thank you first of all for all your many blessings that you have provided to us. We pray that you would help us tonight to make the decisions or to be wise in our discussion, Lord, and also in our voting. Lord, we pray that you would forgive us of our sins. We pray that you would touch those who are sick with COVID and with other diseases, Lord, that you would heal them, that you would take care of our citizens, Lord, and continue to bless us in your name we pray. Amen.
Do you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to testify in the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening are the minutes from our regular session of September 21st of 2021 and the minutes from our work session of September 21st, 2021. Is there any?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Nancy, is there an appearance of citizens?
Yes, sir.
The next item on our agenda this evening is under whole business, and this is the Development Authority, the Northwest Harris Business Park Improvements, the One Georgia Grant Application Update. And Mr. Craig Greenhalgh has an update for us to say. Some information to share.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Of course, my name is Craig Greenhalgh. I live at 1568 Barton Sperry Road, and I serve on the Development Authority, and I'm currently the Chair. And I am here tonight to update you on the progress of One Georgia Grant. And we are really excited to come before you tonight. We've made tremendous progress on the One Georgia Grant in a very short timeframe, really. I was here before you in May, and we've been building the work to get ready to make this process so we can make the timeframe, which is October 21st. Along with my partners, I got Megan Duke here tonight. I want to thank Megan Duke in West Point. And I've got Charles that's with me also from the Development Authority, sort of a collaborative effort. Harris County Chamber has worked with us. Georgia Power Economic Development has worked with us for a number of years. Harris Gray is our development person, engineer up in the Business Park. And then Alex Smith Consulting, Cali Endeavor have been really tremendous on working with us. So what we've done in this time period is come up with a detailed engineering plan, which is to build 35 acres of the 98 acres, which is called Site Ed. Many of you are familiar with that. We've talked about this for four years now in the plan. So our number one goal in the park at this point is to make sure that the site is more competitive so we can attract additional businesses in. We've had a lot of inquiries over the past four, five, six years. It just needs to be in a more ready state because the industries that come in and businesses, they're ready to go to work. So we've been working at that end to make this a reality. That includes expanding the road basically 1,700-plus feet, providing utilities, getting a flat pad ready, surface ready, master detention, which would include 35 acres that we're talking about tonight. And also the 55 acres remaining would be ready to go to the master detention. So if you would look, I believe Nancy has provided you a source of funds document. Y'all have the source of funds document. It has a nice breakout of the budget that's going to be required to make this project successful. And the first thing is the commitment on the Georgia One Grant. That's a $500,000 grant that we're trying to achieve. Everything is contingent upon receiving that grant. That's the first of our business. So we know we're going to be successful in getting that money. Hopefully, we will. West Point is going to provide additional $510,000, $138 they place to do that. The Development Authority has already provided $48,400 of investment. That was what we put in to make sure and get this project ready to go and do it in a smart fashion. And what we're asking tonight is for you to make the investment. And we're requesting the balance and the commitment to the fund, which would be approximately $1,343,937.34. And we're suggesting that the funding from the 2019 SPAS for economic development, which we developed out of our program combination with the Chamber. We developed a revenue source to be able to do that, plus you'll need a little bit of money from the general fund or maybe from other sources. So we would ask for y'all's commitment and support in that tonight. It's a big investment, but we've yielded and brought a great fruit out there over the years. The things that are off of a basement now, General One, that you compare at this same size and magnitude that generate a $100,000 a year revenue, taxes are coming in. So we would anticipate something like that in the future of this as well. The timeframe, if it's awarded, the grant would be awarded by the end of this year. So it's an accelerated timeframe. Following acceptance and completion of design documents, bid and award, the construction will start possibly in the spring, December of 2022, and the completion will be four to six months. And the rules require that we complete within a two-year timeframe. So as I said, I look for your support of this endeavor, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if I can.
Do we have any questions?
So the pad would just be a dirt pad. It's not a concrete pad. It's just a dirt.
Right. It'd be probably, it'll have 1% to 2% grade. So there's all, you got a hill up there, it'll be graded so that we have drainage, positive drainage, but it'll be ready to go as close as you can because each individual business that comes up, it will be, you know, a little bit different for each one, but it'll be ready to go.
And so, I know you don't know the answer to this, but I'm just thinking you might, could make me feel better about it. Do you think that those businesses that have looked at us over the last, say, five years would have looked at us a lot more positively if they had been able to visualize the site?
No question. That's where the feedback on every one of them, Megan probably can speak to that too. We've had, I think she gave me a list, and I think it's between eight and 10 defined, really strong candidates, and four or five of them came and made visits, I believe. And that's a big part of it. Most of them don't have the time. First of all, the variables that are involved. We've reduced tremendous amount of variables by doing what we did this summer to determine the right elevation, to put it on the right way to build the road and go in and have it designed for a master plan for that 98 acre. So to answer your question, I think, it's no question that would have helped.
Any other questions?
Speaking of the last, I guess, even now that has come to us in the past, do we have any of these ones that are waiting for us to be done? Or is there any leads to, I mean, I know it's not, we'll build it and see if anybody comes back. And it is going to be, you know, I guess, an average screen of that now. Do we know that's waiting on us? Or is this just something that we're trying to wait to do, get done and be able to get private?
Well, it's a fluid situation. I'm sure you're down in the business with the business you're in. There's people looking all over all the time. Harris County is a very solid area. My background's real estate too. So I mean, I don't know any specific lead in this particular town that's there, but we work every one of them, you know, like it's the only choice out there.
And y'all don't see brick and mortar changing in the next couple of years? Or what pandemic's kind of giving everybody work from home? Or you're going to be, you know, predominantly like manufacturing?
Yeah, this is industrial, yes. Most of our, most of the people up there on industrial base, of course, a natural fit to be with Kia, you know, it's a natural one. But it'd be nice to have additional diversity. I mean, there's warehouses, you know, for people that are figuring out all kinds of ways to make things happen.
And this property is there for logistics and everything else too?
Yes, sir. I believe it's there, and it just is spanning right up to there.
Right.
Yes, sir.
This would also, Megan, I would just, in order to, this would also make us more attractive for the state to market us to?
Yeah, absolutely. The state has a marketing program called GRAD, Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development Program. And so those are typically shovel-ready sites. So this is really on that track of the GRAD site and for the state, you know, to.
So this would make us grad certified?
No, not necessarily, but it's, I think, right now, the GRAD program has about 60 sites across the state. So I feel like it's oversaturated. And with the location of this park being so competitive on the Interstate 85 market, it's just being, just doing this project to get the site flat would make it competitive.
I mean, we're going, I think we're going to finance that. I mean, we're getting it ready. We're going, we're ready to go. We just need to drive prospect in there.
If I could just make a comment, and I can't, can't provide any specifics, but within the last 10 days, we were being looked at very seriously. Not necessarily on this Harris Business Park, but we are on the radar of some big businesses, really big businesses. And we were down to, we were number two and lost out. But so far, but we are being looked at.
Any other questions?
For question purposes, how do you want the 1.4 to be made?
I would think that the way that you have it described here, the 1.42 SPAS, is that what we put in SPAS? That's what I would say.
In 2019, there was a total for economic development and broadband, 1.25 million. We spent about $50,000, we got 1.2 million. So we could use the entire economic development and broadband, 1.2, and the balance of $20,000 to come from next year's budget. Everybody budget for it.
And we got a two-year, you know, it's going to be in the next fiscal year once it's good.
Any other questions? Mr. Greenhalgh, thank you. Mr. Charles, thank you for all y'all's time to make the.
They work really hard, and it's, it's short enough.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second with the details of the funding sources.
And all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. We're grateful for your support and commitment. Look forward to success.
The next item on our agenda this evening under whole business is the approval of the use of American Rescue Plan funds, ARP funds. Harris County received 3.4 billion in federal ARP funds earlier this year. Those funds were placed in FY 2021 and 2022 budget. We previously discussed how our best thought was our best option of using this money. And I assume everyone's looked over the list, but Randy sent it, Nancy sent it to us. Randy, I have one question for this ARP money. And I've talked with the Commissioners briefly. I know the state is supposed to be our first responders. Some kind of monetary support check bonus. I'm not sure how to pass on it exactly now, but is that something, have our employees, the ones who do not receive those funds, would it be possible for us to use some of this ARP money to maybe match what the state has given to our remaining employees or not getting that money?
Yes, that's a, there's a possibility. We did some real quick checking, okay? When the state gives the county its ARP funds for law enforcement of public safety as a supplement, out of all the county employees, and it's only full-time county employees, it's 149 county employees that will be receiving the funds from the state.
149?
149. That leaves 130 employees in the county, full-time, that will not be receiving these state funds of $1,000 as a supplement. So if the county board wants to give these 130 full-time employees or eligible to receive these funds as premium pay, ARP funds can be used. And we checked into it, and so that's $130,000. But it's really $220,000 once you factor in all of the payable expenses, FICA, workers' comp, retirement, Medicare. And we would, the state's only paying the $1,000 in FICA. It's up to the county to pay all the other payable benefits of workers' comp, retirement, Medicare. So in order to, for the employees to get the full thousand, even $1,000, not $972, you know, payroll taxes taken out. I think it would be, I think it would be a better solution to give everybody that $1,000 net and the county fund on the state's portion, all the payroll taxes, but the state's would have paid the FICA portion. The county pays for everything else to have all the employees get the $1,000. And on the county side, do the same thing. Give the $130,000, $1,000 for all full-time employees, and the county pay for all payroll expenses. So that would be about a $220,000 expenditure from ARP funds. That would come from a combination of the HVC system for courthouse, a little bit of the water lines that we haven't spent thus far, and the court man for broadband that's unallocated. So that's the, those three items where we could pull this funds from.
And what you're saying, the court man, you're talking about from the.
From the ARP funds earmarked for broadband, that last, that last room for granted?
Seventy?
Yes. All are part of those three categories.
Run those categories now.
$230,000 total, it could come from a combination of the HVC system of 2.17 million or the water lines that the remaining is like $260,000 or the $250,000 allocated for broadband.
Now, on our water line, where do you want with that? Or I guess looking from Grim Drive, would that be those?
Yes, the, out of the two, out of the $394,000 we have total, $130,000 has already been spent for the airport Calway connection, and Grim Drive has been estimated for $200,000. So those two things would pretty well match up with the available funds we have, you know, given a little bit of contingency here and there based on volatile prices right now.
Any other questions?
So that, to the, I'm sorry. Okay, Bob.
You're good.
And that, the other, we're looking at our page two.
Correct. Page two is not even being.
Correct. We can't help with it, I think, anyway.
That's right. Just the first box, page one.
So that's 139 plus the 200 for green, giving it 339, so you're taking about around $54,000 of the water.
In the water, we have about $260,000 remaining.
But we're saying Grim Drive is going to cost about $200,000, correct?
Leaving about $60,000 in that account. Hopefully, the consultants' estimates are good.
Any questions?
Right.
I would recommend that we leave the water lines what they are and take $150,000 out of HVC and $70,000 out of the broadband.
We can do that.
Or $175 out of HVC, but I just think we need to leave the water lines alone.
Oh, my God, $150,000 now.
$70 out of the. That would, that would still leave us $180,000 in the broadband that we haven't earmarked yet in case something comes along to support.
Outside of what we're already coming up?
Off, outside.
Any other discussion?
So we're thinking out of those two categories as described, and I know all the other employees will be very appreciative of the board's actions today.
And when will we receive the state money?
That's, that's.
Applications, please, October.
The portal hasn't even opened yet, and there's a webinar on Friday afternoon. But right now, county staff is getting all of the requested data. It's a bunch of data, namely employees' names, certification titles, and certification numbers. And so it's getting to that granular level of detail. So we're gathering that data right now to be ready. So when the portal does open and the template is ready, we'll be ready to fill that and submit.
So I know there's $300 for volunteer fire department.
Correct.
Each volunteer fire.
Yes.
So will that just be to send in all their roster, the little city?
Nancy's doing that.
We have to keep that from the kids or insurance we have on that, and the regular insurance. So we have that, and I've got it verified this week already.
So we wouldn't make our expenditure until the state money comes?
This would be done all at the same time, concurrently together, whatever that is. But we're, the staff is doing it as fast as we can when we can, as long as the state will open up the portal so we can submit the data.
What kind of rough timeframe would we be looking at for starting water lines on the drive?
I called our consultants, and we already have a proposal. Get the board prison tonight, and sign it, just tomorrow morning, and get it going. Design might take two months, bidding out a month, construction about four months. I would say we can have Grim Drive done by John first. It's only 2,000 feet, under feet. It's not far at all. It's not, it's not far to design. It'll be bid out, and a general contractor will do it. And we're expending $200,000 for that, all in, design, bidding, construction, all the aspects of the construction project. But with, but every consultant I talk to, every single one, yells and screams at me about contingent upon availability, contingent upon labor, contingent upon supplies. That's an asterisk on everything I get. So I think if everything went well, this would be easily done much over.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the use of the American Rescue Plan funds as specified in the list with the changes that we've just made tonight.
I will second that. Any other discussions?
On behalf of the employees, I'd like to thank y'all for the.
And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is some new business, and this is an appointment for the Board of Family and Children Services. And I have an individual in mind to appoint, and that person is Catherine Grant. And she has a resume attached that we all have. So I would like to motion to appoint Catherine Grant. And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a consideration of the Airport Five-Year CIP Plan. And I know Mr. Phil Pepperly is here this evening and would share a little knowledge with us of the airport's programs.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. I'm Phil Leggley with Lead Edge Design Group. We're talking about the Five-Year Airport Cap Improvement Plan. So every year in Georgia, it's November, it's due. All 5,000 public-use airports across the U.S., FAA requires them to turn in a Five-Year Cap Improvement Plan in this format with the columns for federal, state, local. The focus is for FAA to be determined. Funding demands, there's always about three times the amount of requests that they. But they use it for planning. They rank the projects in terms of what they fund, safety first, capacity, like A-grads, expansion second, and then revenue generating like a fuel farm third. So when we look at this format, what we'll talk about this year is this is kind of evolutionary from what we had last year. Up in the upper left, it says November 2021, which is when this will be submitted. With the first-year projects, there is a narrative, an application, a sketch, an engineer's estimate, a lot of paperwork that goes in with each of these projects. We take care of that for your cause and submit it into the system. So the first-year projects are the real focus. The others are planning so FAA has an idea that those projects are coming. When you look around the left-hand side, under fiscal year, you see the first year's 2023. So it looks like there's actually some year missing, 2020, 2022. This is their format. The first, when you submit in November 2021, it's for money that's coming out July 1st of 2022, which is fiscal year 23 for the state in FAA fiscal years right after that. So again, when we're submitting in November, it's for consideration funding in the next July 1st. So run real quickly through the projects that are listed, the first year, talk about them. As we get started, and you talk about economic development and Business Park and all that, the airport is doing really well. So of 103 public-use airports in Georgia, you are now 32nd in base aircraft.
Say that again, now.
Of 103 public-use airports in Georgia, so those are not private strips, and some of these are actual public-use airports that have FAA money. Out of 103, you're 32nd in base aircraft. So if it was college football rankings and it was 103, you'd be 32nd. With the ability to expand and all these things lead you to generate more kind of economic impact in the airport. So that's where we're going, ties into all the other positive things you're doing. The first project down here is runway lighting, airfield signage, and roof dome rehabilitation. It's basically electrical project. So your airfield electrical system, the edge lights on the side of the runway, they have about 20-year lifespan. So you're nearing the end of that 20 years. So this would be a standard project. You do nowadays, those, when we do, we do that here for lighting, it's LED, it's that recording. So that'll be the same power rail, things like that, that'll probably set a break down for the airport. But that's on there in the first year just because that's something we've reached the end of useful life. The second item is AWAS replacement. And AWAS is a weather station that's out there. You have one now. And that also has about a 20-year useful life, and it's near the end of its useful life. That project, if you see, has no federal share, only state and local. That AWAS replacement of the six firms that produce that product nationally, state of Georgia went out and did a state contract that read it basically a lot more. And so that's a fixed price that they have, and they'll participate. They'll give you 75% of the money for that. So that request is.
I'm sorry. Can you just say this, Bob?
It's, it's about 100%. And they go through a cycle, and you have, you know, lightning strikes, and you have all kinds of activities that go on through the, through the lifespan of that. You get in a position where the existing AWAS you have, it's almost a hospital in parks for anymore. Regardless of supply chain, there's going to be a count for the model that's old. So this just puts you in a good position of getting going forward. The third, the third project down there is literally on there. The state has begun the state aviation programs. SBN participating 70%. Some terminal building improvements. So we have funding for brand-new million dollars in funds for brand-new terminal in Higgins County that we're working on now. So this is in there just as a request. If you can give $300,003, that's great, you can use some improvements. Now, new terminal, but just improvements on the control. Conference terms and everything like that. If, if you can get that since that one is being placed available by G-D Aviation. The last one on there is shown as a local share, so it'll be up to you if you want to do that or not. It's a runway strength analysis, which basically lets us publish this weight-bearing capacity that could be for your corporate folks who are coming in for their insurance and need to know that the runway is basically the plane up. So that's something you can do at your option, but we put that on there. The later years, you start to get into the project where you're doing. The later years, you start to get into the project where you're doing land acquisition house and road, you're looking for a running extension out that direction, so environmental assessment for that project. The third year's design, fourth year construction of that extension. And then in the fifth year place, it shows all local share, but it's adding T-hangers, what, that's your base aircraft. That part out there in the fifth year, shown local, but if they come through and there's some change in funding or something, and they begin to fund those projects by just adding it on here, often they could pull data from all the CIPs and say, how much money will we have to provide if we're gonna find hangar? And they look at this, and because you have it up in fifth year with really no obligation, you might have to have that bottom. So that's more of a strategic plan too. So this is the CIP, we think this is very, very solid, supports everything you want to hear for, especially positions you will take care of some of those twenty-year items that are cycling up and it'll be there on this meeting. Is there any questions that I can answer? Myself, thank you.
Is there a motion for our second thing?
I think the motion to approve the library CIP.
Okay, now second.
Any further discussion? And in all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the impact fee methodology report from Mr. Lee Walton. He's here for us to sign some answers to questions. And if you guys have more information?
Absolutely, good evening. Mr. Lee Walton with me, Paige Chapley. So in short summary before Paige goes into a few technical details, we started back in the spring, late spring, with initial kickoff meeting, organizing an advisory committee that you appointed, meeting of the advisory committee, then preparing what's called the methodology report, which you received a copy of, and we're going to sum it up tonight. We met with the advisory committee on September fourteenth to review the methodology report, had a discussion with them, I believe you got some notes from that meeting, or what was discussed there. And so now the next step in the process is a discussion with you, answering any questions you have about this methodology report, and then asking you to consider approving methodology report, not adopting, but approving, which would, if you so, authorize us to continue the next step of the CIP component, the capital plan. And Paige will describe more what that means in detail. So I'm gonna ask Paige to go through some details, and then hopefully you got questions
Thank you, Lee. And Lee's not gonna go far, because we tend to tag-team our projects. So yes, as he mentioned, methodology report is what we want to provide a brief overview of today, this evening, and also describe how it functions, what we get out of it, how it's used as part of the impact of the study. It's really the most significant, or the first deliverable that you have seen coming out of the study. And it positions us to move forward, as we said, to the next step, which is to prepare CIE or capital improvements element. The CIE is the first required component of an impact fee program required by the state, but we also have the information that will be called from the methodology to move to the final part, which is crafting the local impact fee ordinance. And it's within that impact fee ordinance that includes language that is used to help administer the program, so it has a lot of guiding language, that's incredibly helpful. And at the end of the ordinance is included the local ordinance fee schedule. So whatever the adopted impact fee schedule is, that would be decided upon by ourselves, that would be a part of the impact fee ordinance. So looking ahead, as we said, we have what is needed from the methodology to craft the CIE. Once we move forward and develop that document, we'll have two public hearings, then the document goes to the board, or the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to require review. While it's under review, then the typical part of the process is we come back before you to really get into the needs with respect to the fees. We talk about what they should be, what you want them to be, what you're comfortable with them being, and we have spreadsheets where we can play with them and offer different scenarios. But speaking of the fees, the methodology first sets us up with a little bit of a sneak preview with respect to what the maximum fee schedule could be, should the county elect to adopt an impacted program. And that's presented early on in the methodology report, so I wanted to go ahead and point to that. That is, I believe it's your page eleven, it'll say, people want a maximum impact fee schedule. So the, the methodology, a key purpose of it is to help us figure out what is new development's fair share with respect to how much they need to be paying for additional capital projects that are needed to serve future growth. So the state tells us that we have to, new development can't care more than their fair share, but we have to figure out what that is, what is that threshold? So that's really the crux of the methodology report, understanding what population projections are, what is new growth looking like, what are the capital projects that are going to be used to serve that growth, and all of that then results in a maximum fee schedule. So as I mentioned, two steps down the road, once we get past the CIE, when that's under review, we can then talk to you about these fees. You can go lower, you can go a lot lower, you can go a little lower, you can go low in if you want to reduce parks and recreation fee and/or sheriffs, you can look at percentages. There's a lot of ways to displace and base it, but we're not quite there yet. This is, as I said, a little bit of a sneak preview, and this sets the ceiling that we can then, it sets the stage for future discussions with the fees. As far as how we arrive at these fees, well, that's pretty much what the rest of this document gets us to. What follows after the fee schedule are the forecasts, a lot of tables and charts, getting into population projections, employment projections. We use all of that data, again, these projections, I don't know if I mentioned, we're looking over twenty years ahead, we're looking up to twenty-four and five. So this is a big picture view. And ultimately then, we arrive at what the actual project needs are to meet the demands of future growth. So I want to just skip forward for one example, and that is for the parks and recreation chapter. So what follows after the pages or chapters of the methodology that get into all of the data and number crunching, then we have dedicated chapters for parks and recreation, sheriffs off in, that's the J L, EMS, E nine-one-one, and fire. And so just as an example for parks and recreation, on page fifty-two, table twenty-seven. I'm forgetting, you're jumping around a few occasions.
We're approximately fifty-two.
Yeah.
Table twenty-seven.
Cost to meet future demand for parks and recreation. Fifty, okay. Yeah, my bad. So cost to meet future demand for parks and recreation. So this is getting down to the, the details. The preceding pages of this chapter set the stage for this table, one where we want to know what's in the existing inventory for parks and recreation, how many park acres there are, how many playgrounds, how many golf fields. And then we want to run that forward. If we were to continue to provide the same amenities, I mean, getting the same level of service for future population, then how many additional golf fields are demanded by future growth for twenty forty-five, how many additional playgrounds, et cetera? So while each chapter may have a little bit of difference, this is an example of what you're gonna find for each public facility category, where one is telling us, well, what are the needs, what are the cost estimates, and then what of each of these components, to what extent are they impact fee eligible? The tables that follow get into actually crunching, it's establishing what the maximum fee is for the parks and recreation category. When we move over to the CIE, at the point where we, we have this table with all the projects, after that, you're not going to see these cost tables. Instead, the CIE is really gonna focus on the project needs. And then that's also moving to include a five-year community work program that consolidates various projects and hits into greater specificity. For example, you know, we see that there's a need for six batting cages. Well, how does that translate in the next five years? If there's a need for one at a particular park, then we can specifically identify that in the five-year work program and the capital improvements element. And then each year, that five-year CWP is updated, take one year off, add one year, it can be used as a guide in the annual budget decision process. So that's then sort of the relationship, when you see the CIE, it's gonna look a lot like this, it's just a streamlined version. And then, as I mentioned, there are just, you'll find the same for each category, similar methodology applied to help us understand what type, what number of projects are impact fee eligible to meet the demands of future growth for each of the public facility categories that we're using them in. And it's, yes.
I would nuance of that. It can be that a portion of a project is impact fee eligible and another portion is not. Again, that gives us a fair share of that.
That's right.
So you'll see a, a column in that table we're just looking at.
Yeah, parks, park acreage is a good example, is a hundred percent impact fee eligible? And so according to the level of service, you all have enough park acreage as it is, there's actually an excess. And so that means a hundred percent impact fee eligible means the cost burden, if you want to add additional park acreage, is all on new development. Anything that's only partially impact fee eligible, sometimes thirty-five percent impact fee eligible, then that means only thirty-five percent of that project can come with an impact fees. So then we're looking at additional funding, having to come from elsewhere to, to pay for that. Thank you.
I just wanted to point that out, because the whole principle of future development paying fair share only is really a key to all these complicated calculations.
Right, right. Thank you, that's a great point. And then sort of big picture, as we mentioned earlier, we don't, the, the CIE will have to be adopted if you all want to initiate an impact fee program, a local impact fee ordinance will have to be adopted, but with methodology, we don't adopt because while there's only a maximum fee schedule, we don't want it to appear as if these are being adopted by virtue of the following adoption. So we want to make sure we're all on the same page and we can continue to move forward. And then ultimately, big picture, that would take us to the beginning of March for everything to be completely wrapped up and for you to begin collecting impact fees that you can choose. What am I forgetting?
There must be some questions, so.
Ask questions? I think you answered it. When you look at one of the charts, it's like impact fees, fees could be seven thousand dollars, and then another part it said, well, the average home price is, say, three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred thousand, so your impact fee for residential would be about three thousand dollars, no, what, four thousand? So you're saying, would it be a sliding scale on residential based on the value of the home? Or would it be a flat amount in a subdivision?
The latter, it doesn't matter. So the same numbers apply whether it's an apartment complex, each dwelling unit, it's the same impact fee, it's just dwelling unit, so with a way to, if, if there's a desire to reduce that, we don't just say, well, we'd like to take the maximum of about seven thousand, not three thousand, we need to look at each of those individual categories that together comprise that total, and looking at making adjustments and saying, oh, the parks and rec, should that be fifty percent? What do we need to do to bring that down to the, to the total number that ends up being at three thousand for a house, dwellings and that? But once it's set, and that's applied for every dwelling, regardless of the type.
And the basis for that is that it's not based on a value, it's based on a number of people that are added additionally to the population, thus demanding more services.
So the statement that most counties don't assess the maximum allowed impact fee is because of, you're trying to hold it to about one percent?
That is, seems to be a rule of thumb, but there's no legal basis for that, there's no, you know, guidance or direction towards that. Once, once the maximum fee is established, that's what all the calculations need to do. Once that's established and documented, then you as the elected officials are able to set fee schedule according to what you determine most appropriate, up to or under that maximum.
And then there was a statement that most alike, we could determine if we did not want to assess an impact fee on commercial development because that would assist us economically because of the taxes that they would bring in and pay. So is that typical, that counties don't assess an impact fee on commercial?
Truly, the only way to, if you have an impact fee program, the only way to not have commercial development is if you, the parks, recreation, and law and areas, if you only had those as your only two categories, that snaps to residential, that's why we do it for show. And so we can't look at the fire category, for example, and say, we're only going to assign that to residential and just ignore all the commercial uses, we can't do that. And so the only way to just bring that number down, it would apply to everybody across the board. And what we're gonna be talking about though, when we get into the details with the ordinance and the fees, there are additional mechanisms that will be spelled out in the ordinance that talks about exemptions that potentially can apply to certain types of commercial uses as an economic development incentive.
That would be about three.
Right, and so that, we'll, we'll be getting into those tools, so it's not just, well, what's the fee schedule, if you want to decrease it relative to the maximum here, that's one thing, but there are also other tools that can be applied on a case-by-case basis, people can just claim, you know, I think this assessment is too high, this is wide, and so there are a lot of other mechanisms to give the flexibility there with respect to certain uses that are concerned about, such as commercial.
I just got one more. On the recreation, on table twenty-seven, when you talk about rodeo arena, we have one weekend a year when we do a rodeo, but the type of, of building that we've discussed often, building, is really an agricultural events center. I wouldn't want people to think that we would build a half million dollar building for a one-weekend event. So could that language be changed and then from rodeo arena to agricultural events center? Because, you know, you could have that written out every weekend with animal shows and forage and other activities.
Traditionally, you refer to it as just a covered arena.
Covered arena.
Yeah.
I just don't want it, I don't want people to think you spend that kind of money for one weekend event.
I think that crystal clear, and that's great, thank you.
So when we first started talking about this, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we only talked about residential and didn't mention commercial in here. But now you're saying commercial cannot be excluded, that there are some exemptions that would be possible for commercial. So those, are those like a hundred percent exemption on commercial property, or just a portion of, of an exemption, or, I mean, I'm not, I say much to make that exemption, but could we do up to a hundred percent exemption?
So there will have to be, if we can come back to, when we talk about this with examples in other communities, and we're seeing a language that has to be tied, it has to be expressly stated in the impact fee ordinance that talks about exemptions, and in essence, you're stating a policy, you will decide what is it that relates to extraordinary economic development, that that's the term that it's called, and you all will then define what that means. Whether it's in other communities, they may have looked at industrial park, if you're wanting to encourage development there, then there'd be an exemption for people to locate, or businesses to locate there.
In a specific area.
Right, exactly, a specific area. If you're wanting to encourage certain types of uses, commercial uses, then you could look at establishing an exemption. Now, we'll also talk about this more, but here's the flip side of that, is it's not Now, we'll also talk about this more, but here's the flip side of that, is it's not, the exemption is not forevermore, meaning if you accept those uses, you're still on the hook for making sure that those impact fees that are not having been paid by the commercial use are still being paid. And so that's why there is careful discussion and correcting some policy, because the point is that there is a countywide benefit to this extraordinary economic development will then accordingly then perhaps, as such, then the county would be willing to offset that into a pay or an impact fee. So those are some things that we're going to need to talk about because it's not necessarily this black and white. But it is a tool that is employed by your communities. And also, having a development authority, they can act in capacity of making recommendations and having, say, uncertain, whether it's crafting, helping to craft their policy, or dealing cases that come in, making the determination of their responsibility.
And it gets back to the fair share principle. When you're talking about fire, you know, facilities could address growth in terms of fire, very much like commercial with both residential.
And in some ways, I feel that commercials, especially in the industry, we definitely have a little bit more strain on business than, you know, the same kind of, so definitely that would be something that would be taken into consideration, regardless of how you have to take these risks. So we make up for it from the county.
And when we come back also, we will have some tables that show fees in other counties, not only for single-family home, which is what resonates with most people, but also different use scenarios, like a 60-inch square, a shopping center, or an office building. So we can factor in, you know, what other counties are charging for their impact fees for some commercial uses as well, so you kind of have a dimension to see where the maximum is willing to take to that.
So when you look at the maximum fee table in there, the number for residential is higher than commercial numbers. Now, a lot of the commercial numbers mostly are based on first-world cost, but the Parks and Recreation component of this does not apply to commercial, so that's why your residential is higher for Parks and Recreation.
You know, I thought that was fair when we base it on square feet. And then, and it goes up again, I mean, it's so page 12. So, but Andrew's right, when we talked about impact fees, we really did not even consider commercials. So, you know, I'm appreciative that as part of this, this is like, oh, yeah, they impact too. They impact positively, but they also lose resources.
The brown juice also.
I was going to say, just the positive impact, we're just looking at the industrial park, looking at gaining $100,000 a year, part of fear of minds if we have an impact fee. In true Canada, you have an impact fee for these commercial people, or they surround Canada, so it's like, I have that for work.
That's right.
From the commercial side, it's struggling, it's a lot of genetic.
I think that's why the development part would be important in making recommendations to this, if that's what we've decided or policy.
How you treat that kind of becomes a part of your package of incentives.
Randy, Kat, or maybe Lee, how are the projects in terms of areas?
Some of the, we're looking at the Parks example. The projects, and these, of course, aren't detailed projects. We'll get into the CIE and the five-year work program will be integrated into things in greater detail with respect to parks. But what you see under the component types, they are there because, one, that existing type of component, like a baseball field, already exists. And so because it's there, we need to know how many more of that are going to destroy future growth. And then we have some that don't currently exist, such as the arena that we discussed. Now, arena, the boat fishing dock, disc golf course, fitness stations outdoor, pickleball, splash pad, and then mountain bike trails. Those are currently not in the inventory, but they show up as new projects. That's based on discussions with the Parks and Recreation Director. Since we don't have a Parks and Recreation Plan, which often informs these projects because they identify project recommendations that we're able to account for, he's made us aware of the fact that whether it's the completing others' park, that there are some projects coming online that are going to most likely have certain components, we mentioned the arena, that in order to be impact fee eligible, we were able to take that information in and make sure that there was a level of service, that these are additional components that will be part of the long-range system for Parks and Recreation. That's what we do in every impact fee study, is we're, in some instances, we don't have specificity, and other instances, based on adopted plans, like the Parks and Recreation Plan, as well as input from the respective specialists or department heads, then they can make us aware of more specific projects that they know will help and are needed in order to consume these for community, like in our town here. So it's kind of, it's hybrid in some instances, where mostly it's based on what do you have now and carry it forward. But then we also account for some new project types that are assigned a level of service and are intended to help augment the existing park system.
Okay. So, go ahead, Francis. Thank you.
And I just add, it's helpful, I think, to have a fairly broad list of options here so that year by year, when you go to set your budget, you've got more approved options to choose from as opposed to few.
Right, right. And so it could be in the next five years, some of these things, they're just, they don't show up on the radar, but maybe beyond that, at least they're impact fee eligible by virtue of being carried forward into the CIE.
You're not obligated to do everything on the list, but you're obligated to choose from the list for what you need, than using a vacuum. And can that list be changed and sold at what intervals?
And how? Yes, so, great questions. A lot of communities, when they visit their list about every five to seven years, they find that priorities change, or, you know, they're going handbusters and they've already implemented them, and they're looking for additional projects to be impact fee eligible. When that's done, that's called a CIE amendment. So you've already got your CIE document, and you're doing a major amendment to identify additional lists of projects. And you have to kind of go back and recreate the wheel. You need to do another methodology because then you're looking at a different timeframe of planning horizon, looking at 20 years from whenever that start time is. So that can be done whenever. Some folks wait 10 years, 15 years, but we're encouraged, just like with the comprehensive plan, to kind of take a look at that every five years to see how things are meeting your local needs. And then it's just the same process of amending. You have public hearings that are required to amend your CIE document. The state does have to review it. And then you have to then amend your local impact fee ordinance to account for potential change in fees based on new methodology that is developed. So, yes, the process, but also just to point out, as long as you, if you end up adopting an impact fee program and your fees are less than the maximum, if you decide a year out that you want to increase one of the categories or decrease it, as long as you're not going above the maximum established, there's latitude. You do have to amend your ordinance, and there's a public hearing process for that. You don't go back to square one. You don't, you don't have to go through this sort of process. But if you want to add projects, you're going to have to take another look at the larger process.
Page, you know, following that. So it would be in the county's best interest when the CIE is, and before the board approves a CIE, which is a policy document, to make sure all these projects and every category has been reviewed by as many people as possible, to make sure this is the most accurate representation of what is needed or wanted in the county. Then that would minimize going back through the entire process. Is that interesting? Would you concur to that?
Yes, I do want to say, it's not a plan, though. It's not as if, as we said, you know, if it's not in your CIE, can't do it, but it doesn't mean that all of this is going to be done tomorrow. I'm pointing this as a facility. So, but it's saying what you could do, what's impact fee eligible, and then what is the fee that is meant to be paid for these projects that you can identify.
So on page 57, where the Table 33, project costs to meet future demands, those three projects, so the sheriff identified these three projects.
So the, again, this is another combination where, first of all, the types of projects are consistent with the existing type of, you know, buildings and vehicles that are already in the system. And so we're carrying that forward. But we did receive information from the sheriff with respect to the number of beds that are needed through 2045. And so that number factored in, 98 is a specific number that was understood and needed to be in place to accommodate future population. The new building area, it's left very general because in that instance, we said, okay, well, forget the jail, we've addressed that. But with respect to space that's technically occupied by the sheriff, well, they got 10,500 square feet. And so based on our growth and population, that means new growth demands on the 6,000 additional square feet. That's where the five-year work program and the CIE will come into play because down the road, someone could say, oh, we need to expand this particular facility by 2,000 square feet, or we need a new standalone building for the headquarters. As long as you're less than the maximum will have at 100% impact fee eligible. So we have some general information there, and then the specific with respect to the beds, and then the tranq park, and again, this is another, just based on what's existing, new growth would warrant additional, additional ban.
That'll move to a certain percentage.
That's right, that's right.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for your patience and your time, I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to see?
Accept.
I'll make the motion that we accept this report as presented to us tonight.
Any further discussion? And Don doesn't beg her. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is our county manager, and this is a bid award for the April and taxiway rejuvenation airport.
Mr. Chairman, Board Commissioners, we currently received a grant from the Georgia Department of Traffic Safety and the Aviation Department to rejuvenate and remark the terminal areas' speed limits and traffic levels. The airport consultant, Lead Edge, Phil Everly, prepared construction documents and assisted county with competitively bidding out this airport improvement project. On the deadline date of September 23rd, the county received three bids. The low bid was from Wall Asphalt Services, McFarland, Georgia, at $68,274. And the high bid was Tascow Incorporated at Summer Grove, Carolina, for $73,280. All bid responses were evaluated by Lead Edge and county staff. Wall Asphalt Services submitted a low bid of $68,274 and has complied with all bid requirements. The GW Aviation Grant will cover 100% of this amount without any county match. If approved, this project will begin during spring of 2022, have duration of about 10 days to complete, and would entail the closing of the airport runway for about two to three days. A motion is needed to award the bid to the low bidder, Wall Asphalt Services, for $68,274, and authorize the county manager to execute the contract and all other necessary documents. Phil Everly is here to answer any questions the board may have. And on the next page is where the, where this material would be applied.
Are any questions for Mr. Everly? This was on your CIE last year. And is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to put the lowest bid, Wall Asphalt Services, for $68,274.
And is there a second? I'll stick it up. And Don doesn't beg her. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is Dylan Surplus, company, and Mr. Dowling.
Mr. Chairman, Board Commissioners, the next item is surplus property. County staff has deemed the items on this list as unneeded for county operations and recommends board of clearies out of the surplus county property and disposal through legal means. The prison received 52 new lockers, and therefore Carroll County has requested all lockers be donated to their county prison. And this type of donation to other public entities is authorized by the county's procurement policies receivers. 1981 Ford fire truck, four-wheel, with a shallow vaulter fire compartment. That's 1981, that's why I graduated from high school. So it is very, very old. The transmission is non-existent, and the engine is slow, but not like me.
It's a fire boy.
Yes. A 2009 International ambulance, because remember, the board has purchased a 2017 ambulance, and this is the one that's old and needs to go. Great name mower, a Cushman grew master, a bush hog, a Kubota tractor, and 12 I-beams that are 10 and a half inches wide, 30 inches tall, and about 44 feet long. And they were given to the county by a contractor several years ago, when a contractor installed new beams on a state route bridge. So a motion, the vote is needed to declare the buyout of the surplus county property and authorize their disposal through donation to Carroll County of the lockers only, and advertise electronic public auction of the remainder of the assets.
Are there any questions for Mr. Everly? No. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we declare these items surplus and that we donate the lockers and advertise the efforts.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And Don doesn't beg her. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening begins from Mr. Dowling, authorization to submit GSP grant application.
Mr. Chairman, Board Commissioners, county staff has been working on and continues to work on the development of the Mano Moore Road or Recreation Trail, but needs additional funds to continue the work. The annual Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program grant, which we officially call the GOS, has the grant cycle for this year is open, and county staff is working on a grant application for Phase Six to continue the trail's development two additional miles from the current Corver Middle School on US 27 to Hudson Mill Road, and submit the application by the deadline of October the 15th. The GRSP grant is 75% state and 25% county. That is, the minimum county mass is 25%, and the minimum grant amount is half a million dollars. The application seeks $672,500 or 46% from the state, and 792,500, 54% from the county's T-Spot funds, for a total project cost of around $1.46 million if the application is successful. The GRSP grant is highly competitive. A lot of citizen towns throughout the state are applying for these grants. We applied the last several years and have not received them. These are very highly, highly competitive, and I'd better say highly equal. The success of the application will not be done until spring of next year, and if successful, the grant funds can be available during summer of 2022. Therefore, if successful, the project can be budgeted in next year's budget. A motion, the vote is needed to authorize the grant application by resolution, and the county manager and chairman to sign all necessary related documents.
Any questions or further discussion? And is there a motion? I'll make the motion to authorize the grant application or resolution. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Don doesn't beg her. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening, my project. The next item on our agenda this evening are project updates and Mr. Dowling.
Can I, can I, when can we, when do we need to start using the population figures from the last census for weed? And I know that's not for every breed, but when do we actually start using the official?
The twenty-twenty census?
Yeah.
I'm using them now.
Okay.
Because that's the most current information we can have.
Yeah, I was gonna recommend, we really need to do that. If they keep it uniform.
Yes, I agree. Very good. So the protocol work, number four, the Uniformed Land Development Code. Those, that document has been posted on county's website for several weeks now. The top portion of all fourteen articles is the clean version. The bottom portion of all fourteen articles is the draft, right marked version. So that's been on the website for about several weeks now for public review. Their first reading will be on October twentieth at the planning commission and the second reading and adoption, if everything goes well, on November the second, if we're the board commissioners. If approved, the new UDC goes into effect on November the sixteenth, if everything goes well. Number, number eight, replace the roof of the prison. Doesn't sound very exciting, but it's gonna be very expensive. We have a pre-bid meeting on September tenth, the bid opening was September thirty, and more consideration on next week on October the nineteenth. It's gonna be more than a hundred forty-five thousand. So we're, we're evaluating the bids, the two bids that we received and going to go back to regulation. Just, just for, just for fun, the low bid was three hundred and nine thousand dollars. The other bid was four hundred ninety thousand. And that's, and the materials are available for another four to six months. So it, we have to talk with the low bidder, directions of this stuff. Number eighteen, develop Allison Park. We've ordered the permanent gates, the various signs, a lake aerator. We're sure that the dock is not quite finished yet. We're a maintenance facility, a pavilion, and we'll perform a lot of land clearing activities. So that is a daily ongoing activity. Bulldozers are out there, we're waiting for the skid steer to show up that we purchased, hasn't been delivered yet. There's land clearing every day, there's burn piles every week. Mike Brown and his Public Works crews out there with bulldozers and backhoes smoothing out the cleared land to make it what Mike Brown says parched. A lot of activities going out there. Every time I'm out there, which is two or three times a week, there's always people coming through saying, is this open yet?
When do you project? I'm not gonna hold you to it. But do you have any idea? We've all been waiting for it seven years, eight years.
The fact is, the fact is, citizens are hungry for this park. They are starving for this park. And when Mike Brown's out there in the next, if it ever rain, when Mike Brown's out there, he's leveling areas for future playgrounds, a future pavilion, you know, building up, you know, construction pads, moving dirt around. I think we could have an opening as early as January. That's the earliest, if it is raining. And when I say open in January, that means we'll have gates, signs, an aerator, a dock. The lodge will be completed. It'll be completed by April, by October the eleventh for the board's review. And we'll have pads, construction pads ready for pavilion, the maintenance facility. We'll have a pavilion ready by January. We'll have the maintenance facility ready by January. And it could be open at that time. And all the land clearing will have been completed. So I'll say January will be the earliest and people can start to, and then every year we will add more amenities, a splash pad perhaps, cornhole perhaps, pickleball, outdoor pickleball courts perhaps, a basketball court, those kind of things. And a lot of trails. You know, the loop trail around the lake. It requires Army Corps permit. We've applied for that several months ago, haven't got it yet.
When will we hear from the grant to, did you apply?
I'll apply, that's our next meeting's agenda, to apply for additional trails on the south side. That will be next spring before we know, and maybe this time next year it could be developed if the grants are successful. These grants are highly, highly competitive. Okay, so Allison Park, it is on top of our list and we're working every day out there. Number twenty-two, phase four, the Mano War Trail. I don't know if I've been up high mountain, but the, the, the rubber bridge number twenty-seven has been painted. I think it looks really nice. So all the left base paint has been abated and it's been repainted the original green color.
Much to the chagrin of the Harris County High School seniors who graffiti it in nineteen seventy-six.
What we're afraid of is they're gonna have another opportunity.
They've discussed it on Facebook, but they're old like me now, so I think it'll happen.
But we have security cameras. And we can see who's doing it. And it's infrared.
There should be, in time.
Or that's what we're gonna say. And we'll assign accordingly. So you never know, who's watching. There may be, there may be not surveillance. And then they're, they're also painting the chevrons on the bulkheads and it's gonna be reflective pink as the original, I think it's a little old. And that should be finished next thirty days. And then phase five, from the country store to the old, the new cor, the old Carver School, that's being designed and surveyed, we should be on that trail this time next year. Using T-SPOS funds. Number twenty-seven was discussed tonight, improving the airport's apron using GDOT grant funds. So that was approved tonight, be done hopefully next June. Because that is weather sensitive. Number forty-two, begin phase one of the courthouse renovation project, using SPOS ninety-five. It's, it's being designed right now, should be finished by November, bid out during December, awarded in February, and be finished by late June or next year. The same consultants doing their courthouse roof as doing the prison roof. And he doesn't feel good about the one point three million dollars. Because, because things are so expensive and lack of development. Number forty-three was discussed tonight, the capital projects using federal area design funds. So we're gonna, since the board approved that, we're gonna get ready and finish all those projects as soon as we can. Number forty-five, we were about tonight, the impact fee study. And the methodical report was accepted, therefore we're heading to the CIE document. Number forty-eight, relocate various county records and board elections to the old Carver School. The relocation of board elections was completed Monday. So it's been completed. So the board elections is now in their new offices in the old Carver School on Carver Circle. They have new paint, carpet, copiers, telephones, and internet, all done. And we are relocating all the records in the next thirty, forty-five days from various places around the county to that Carver School. So that will be our main record depository, all under lock and key, climate control, and surveillance. So that's, that's happening very soon. Number fifty-two, the last one, that was added recently, remove the ten thousand gallon underground diesel fuel tank. The tank is scheduled to be removed during mid-October of this year for about twelve thousand dollars. Again, the county's working on fifty-two projects worth about fourteen point four million and they're all in various stages of completion. You can see the SPOS have lost collections, they're keeping track of budgets. And the single-family home building permits, eleven were issued in September. So the first three months of the year, we are now up to a total of sixty-three. That's the report, be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Well, that fuel tank is getting removed, we're just gonna use our cars at local areas and divisions and that?
Temporary. So while removing the underground diesel fuel tank, state EPI is making this. So we're being forced to do this. In the meantime, we're using the WEX card system. At any gas station in the world. So everybody will have diesel, no problem with diesel or gas. Now, with public works facilities, when that new facility is built, that's where we want to put a new above-ground diesel fuel tank for heavy equipment that's hard to get in, all these retail establishments and all the garbage trucks. They're very hard to get into these retail establishments. So we're gonna keep them out of the retail stores and we want to have our own above-ground fuel tank for diesel. When we build a new public work facility sometime maybe next year. So the diesel tank is a temporary solution.
Randy, are there any grants we're applying for? Apparently we have the one, the rails to trans, there's like more. Nope, and then we got the one for the northwest.
Yes.
This is, do you have those?
No.
Okay, so it's only those three. But that's, but I think that's probably the one that we've ever applied for since I've been a commissioner at one time, which is a great help from the taxpayer.
Right, but I have to admit, they're very labor intensive to me.
They are very labor intensive.
You have to use the buzzword that they're looking for. You have to make sure these things are in your top plan to show that you thought, the county thought about these things and public input. And once you can do that, then it's more successful. Again, they're highly competitive. But so far, we've applied for the Wood George Grant, very important, the Rousher Trails from GSVP. And next objective, we'll have an authorization to submit a rounds, an RTP, Recreation Trails Program Grant. That's only two hundred thousand dollars max. But if you don't apply, you don't get. So we're gonna do our best, and when they're submitted, we'll call our state reps and state centers and ask for us to let them know.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Mr. Burke, anything else to say?
Yes, sir.
There's a name for it, is that what you're saying? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Now, I'll settle that. It's looking better.